All right, we'll now call to order the January 22nd, 2024 City of Hayden Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a roll call.
Chair Taylor?
Here.
Vice Chair Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Bemis?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson, Gibson, and Cricket are absent.
Good.
We do have a forum.
Before we start, do we have any conflicts of interest tonight?
No.
Okay. Excellent. On the item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
I'm going to pledge a pledge.
Oh, got to do the pledge, sorry.
Mayor Davis, you might lead us in the pledge.
I will, thank you, Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll call again, do we have any conflicts of interest this evening?
No.
Okay. Consent, all items on the consent calendar are action items. We have a, any discussion on the consent calendar?
Chair Taylor, can you please speak up? Mike, do we need to push the button?
Yes, it needs to be.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's red. We have the consent calendar. Would anybody, any questions or corrections in the consent calendar, or do we have a motion?
If we don't have any corrections to our meeting minutes, then I would suppose that we accept our meeting minutes and consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, a second.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is accepted. Donna, do you have a report for us?
Not too much. Tomorrow night at the city council meeting, they'll hear the, in public meeting, they'll hear the Hayden Sky planning unit development, and they'll hear the Trail Creek Estates subdivision, the LT zone map amendment we heard at their first meeting in fact, in order to meet those requirements.
Okay.
And now we'll adjourn to our workshop.
So we were, yeah, what happened with the Trail Creek Estates subdivision? We aren't talking about that today, obviously.
Trail Creek Estates subdivision from the plant, Trail Creek Estates is the one, um, Trail Creek Estates subdivision was recommended for approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
At our last meeting, got it. Because I was confused because it showed up as on our, it's on our agenda for today.
Correct.
So I was confused.
With the recommendation.
Copy that.
All right, so who opens up the workshop? I do.
Oh, you want me to say something? You want me to just lead it?
Yep.
Okay.
He needs to roll call his panel.
Oh, that's true. Abby, we have a roll call of the present city council members, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaker?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dupree.
Thank you. Okay, so back in, we'll just say autumn of last year, city council tasked planning and zoning to evaluate the goals and the policies of our current plan, the 2040 comprehensive plan for the city. Planning and zoning, I think, had at least two meetings and then probably some extra homework to present their thoughts, their ideas, and their recommendations to city council. That is the purpose for our workshop tonight, and unless anybody needs some blanks filled in, I will turn it over to Planning and Zoning Chair Sean Taylor.
Yeah, so in our meetings, we basically went through the plans, the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and some ways to maybe simplify and make it more clear. Which is the main thing that we worked on in our comprehensive plan. We did have some PowerPoint presentations, and we did go through the goals that we changed or reworded.
I'm going to just poke in, which one, what do you want me to bring up?
I think just bring up the original sheet, or that shows, you know, what we crossed out, and what we reworded.
This stuff here?
Yeah.
Everything, because it's huge.
How many copies of that were there? Like if we kind of sort of done to see, it's, it's, the goals and policies, it's a little bit easier, but also.
Thank you.
Considering the goals, it's easier to understand what goals and objectives there are, meaning or not meaning, less wordy.
Ben?
Thank you.
Chances are Keith will show up. Or do we know he's not coming? We like to give Keith a hard time because he's known for being late.
I think they kept right on it.
And the council have their own rewording or policies? Alan?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Mayor Davis, did council work it off on the same?
On this set?
Goals and policies side of things?
No, my understanding is unless they took the initiative and looked on their own, city council has not met on any of the work planning and zoning is done prior to today. Is that accurate, city council?
Mr. Mayor, I, first time I got to see this was in the email that Donna sent out last Wednesday afternoon, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I dug through it, I can't say I did my homework from front to back, but.
Did you, were you able to watch either the two planning and zoning meetings where a presentation was given that mostly shows where all this originated?
I did not.
Fair enough.
Mayor, at a point in time here, I do have a presentation that I'd like to make regarding my issues related to the comp plan, future land management, et cetera.
Well, we're all here to workshop, so.
Sure.
Well, if you don't mind, let's roll through what P and D's got first, so we don't, if you, we're already in agreement, or it might give us new thoughts or different ways, as opposed to just kind of coming in with, here's what I want. Because I know P and D put some work into this.
Just a question, the, what Donna handed out, is it in the packet that Donna emailed out? Or is this separate? Is this a new, a new?
It might be an iteration of it. I don't have the email memorized, I apologize. I believe, I believe the information's in there.
No, but is this, is this the same, what we were just given by Donna, is it the same that's found in here? If not?
I believe.
Well, my question goes further, Mr. Mayor.
Except that it's, it's in verbiage like this in here.
There you go. Yeah, it looks like this.
And you consolidate. So if we look at this, we're okay.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's no, yeah, there's no surprises, this is just, it's formatted in a way consistent with how the comprehensive plan currently reads. And in fact, the first item, if I'm not mistaken, Chair, is lined out because it's original, it was originally in there, but then when planning and zoning met, they thought it doesn't necessarily belong at all, and rather than create confusion, we just lined it out. Because I think their recommendation is to actually incorporate as verbiage into the introductory chapter of the comprehensive plan. So, sorry, it's your, it's your ball.
It's your own ball, so you kind of, you understand the background of this, so. This was kind of what we went through, was working through, and this is basically the summary of what we ended up with.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. Since I'm the newest one to these proceedings, I'm playing catch-up, you can understand, and as I said.
You're not actually the newest one.
I'm sorry, newest, right?
You're not the newbie.
All right, hey, how you doing, newbie?
Hello.
All right, anyway, I did read the attachment that Donna sent out, and noticed I had printed four pages per sheet, because I wanted to keep the amount of paper to a minimum. But there were some informative pages before you act, I actually got into the revisions to the proposed goals and policies. Was any of that going to be discussed prior to digging into these tables?
Is this, that's this side of it?
No, so, again, you can't see this, I can barely see it with my reading glasses here, but there are three pages prior to the table that starts, so pages one, two, and three, and in there is.
Are you in the actual comprehensive?
No.
Oh.
Okay, this is the one Donna sent to us.
I'm just making sure I'm on the right page.
So, so, I can, I can answer that. So, planning and zoning, when they performed their review, I did not do it with the notes that city council had put together. The goal of doing that was to not have any bias or influence as they hit their task. So they were tasked with evaluate, make recommendations, they wanted to do that with clean conscience, and then I think the idea was for city council to listen to their recommendations, and then if what city council had drafted prior still may need to fit in there, or should fit in there, that's when that would happen. So that's, that's, so the answer to your question is no.
Okay, so, on pages two and three of that attachment that Donna sent out, there is general comments and a suggested amendments, and there are some things I highlighted. I need to know, are these kind of like statements of where, the way that planning and zoning was thinking when they?
Those are generated from city council, as I understand, and perhaps from the city's citizens, when we talk about what's on page.
It was from the original council.
Right, yeah, there is, okay, so it's all product of a council workshop.
So is part of tonight's deliberations allow for some comment to those parts of the handout?
I don't have a problem with that, I would suggest we hear what P and Z has put together, and then review these to see, do they still fit, are we still, is there direction you still want to go with there? And again, this is supposed to be a workshop where we all kind of come together.
Okay.
But I would hope that P and Z can get through what they want to show you first.
All right.
Okay, some understanding, you were saying, page two and three basically are essentially what the council was discussing, and one of the things that they saw of the comprehensive plan, and then as you get into these pages, this is more kind of a nuts and bolts of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and we tried to simplify it, but also, and make it, because that's part of our approval process, is to look at what goals and policies are here. They met or not met?
Okay.
And so we were trying to, sometimes we have a number of overlapping goals and policies, we kind of simplify it, and eliminate redundancy, and make it clear.
I understand, I understand. There's a lot of red lines in those first few pages of the table, okay? And I did have questions about them, but I'll try to figure out when it's appropriate for me to.
In open workshops, I'd say, if there's questions you have.
And well, I don't also want to dominate the conversation, I'm just, but this is a great deal of inquiry on my part, so.
And then basically, this is, is kind of what they come down to, essentially, and that has, the red line and everything is where we got to this.
Question regarding the condensing to this. Is this, what, what of this is already existing, and what is new? Or is this all new?
I wouldn't say it's new, it's more, it's clarifying, or anything about this. And so we look at, as we go into this, you're out of there's a lot of red there, but it's how we change things, what we deleted, where we combined goals and policies, where they were redundant.
Sean, can I suggest something?
Yeah.
And again, I respect, this is your show, but. There was a slide that kind of showed the methodology of why there are now generally seven tasks, and what they were to represent, in other words, by categorizing, that might provide some clarity and a 10,000-foot view for city council.
And policies were addressed.
Yeah, they won't, they won't have the funny shape on it down there, maybe? Unless, there you go. And you could talk to that and say why we went from.
I don't even remember how many it was, now we started, 19 or 16? So if you go back to the previous one?
18, thank you, I know it's close. Or yeah, maybe just start from the beginning, it's your call.
Yeah, so here's where we started with, was the existing vision statement, and we trunched it down, which we feel we still met all the key points there, and then from that, we moved forward to looking at the goals and policies, how they're implemented.
So, so if you look at these, you'll see overall, what we were trying to do is that more words didn't necessarily mean more, greater clarity, but more confusion. And so we tried to be more succinct in our wording without removing any intention from what we were stating. So.
So I.
Mr. Erickson, you'll, you're on the same page in that, in order for you to catch up, but please feel free to, to make comments for your own personal clarity as well.
Definitely.
As we're going through, okay?
I watched a few of the previous meetings, and then I was going through the actual comp plan, the handout that I got from Donna. So this is definitely helpful to have these questions raised.
Yeah.
Because it helps me.
Sure.
To see where the edits are coming from, and how we got here.
Good.
But I will, thank you very much.
Yeah. Commissioner Bemis, you had a comment?
Oh, I was going to say, are we going to be going through each individual one, and having this similar conversation as to the existing one? And this is the proposed one? Or is that? I feel like we do. And I think one of the things that's very glaring for me, on the existing vision statement, is talking about top-tier K through 12 schools, which don't exist in Hayden. So even that sentence right there makes no sense at all for us to be talking about in our vision statement. There is no school that facilitates the high school in the city of Hayden. So that's one that totally makes sense not to be there. There are plenty other ones, and when we narrowed it down so that somebody could read it, like when I think of a vision statement, or what a business is trying to promote and say, this is who we are, and it's a, I don't know, four, four sentences, it basically says, hey, we don't know who we are. And it needs to be like a punchline in a way, where we walk away saying, yes, this is what Hayden's about. And it should be simple and concise, so. It may not be the best thing that we've come up with, but it's a lot better than the existing one.
Yeah.
If I may mention, Corleone School District 271 has purchased land within the city of Hayden to build a high school. Are you aware of that?
I am. Yep, out on Hutter.
It's south of Hayden, somewhere. And over there, in the corner, kind of by Hutter, between Prairie and. Yeah. So, so there is a high school, you know?
In the plans, but this has been something that's been existing for a long period of time. And so if, if we're saying including top-tier K through 12 schools, is there one that is included right now?
Well, I think the point in the conversation was that the city of Hayden itself does not have a school district. We have a school district that is within the city of Hayden, but it's multi-jurisdictional. So we have no control over that. That's what you guys are talking about.
Right. Right. So, city council has had an opportunity now to read this, do you have any comments about just the vision here, the vision statement?
By the way, I like this. Can you do this for each one, or is that bogging us?
I'd like to know, maybe a little bit more of a definition, is what does responsible growth mean? I think Ed has ideas. Yeah, I think I kind of started that a few years ago, yeah. Right, right. But what does that mean?
Well, it's going to be then spelled out in our goals and policies.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, you can't put everything into the vision statement, the vision statement's kind of an overall, it's not, it's not policy, but it's, and then it's spelled out in your goals and policies, and that's how we make our decisions, is based on whether we're meeting those requirements.
When did we write the existing one? How old is that one? Do, does anybody know?
Donna, do you know?
Did we do that in 2020?
When did we, I know, I'll let you finish.
The question is, was the vision statement reworded and/or created as part of the comprehensive plan project? So it was done when the comprehensive plan was created.
We have a guest who, is he able to speak?
This isn't a public meeting.
Sir.
It's a workshop. It's not a public meeting. So I.
Well, this is a workshop, sir, so it's between the city council and the planning and zoning.
It's not, workshop is the.
That's the discussion right there.
We're, we're working, this is, we're working.
I know. You're short-sheeding the decision process.
Oh, we're not, sir, but what we'll do is, is we'll have, if we do any changes to this, we'll have public workshops, where you can then come and state your opinion, and we can. It hasn't been scheduled yet.
We have to do this first. So, so it's the same thing as when we talk about small-town feel, what does that mean? So that set, that verbiage was, was pulled because we felt that a well-managed Idaho town was more clear to everyone, because what does small-town feel mean?
And we kind of talked about, said, well, that's, you know, letting people out in traffic, or, you know, you actually know your neighbor, but it's not something that you necessarily can.
Quantify.
Or promote beyond planning and zoning.
Yeah. So, again, any comments from city council on this? Otherwise, we'll need to move along a little bit.
Yeah. I don't know if I want to take a shot at the responsible growth thing, but as the discussion goes here, it's really the implementation of the policies and zone and code text and things like that. When you implement that, you reflect responsible growth in your implementation of codes, policies, zone, zoning, and zone tax.
Right, right.
I, I think I get now what we're going to be doing here, we're going to be discussing vision, then we'll be going to goals, then policies, and then eventually codes, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But not the codes today.
Oh, I hope not.
We'd like to be helpful.
On the subject of quote-unquote "small town," I just want to quote from the recent citizen survey. There was a section, which was bar graph, refer, would you refer Hayden to a friend? Growth and congestion was the highest negative expression of not referring. And in parentheses, it said, losing that small-town feel.
I understand that, but can you see the, the problem with having that as a defining statement in our vision? Because for a person that's lived here 60 years, if their vision of a small town were to have held, you and I would not be here.
Oh, no, I totally get it.
And those of us who moved here within the last 10 years would also have a different view of that than someone who's lived here a year. So that's why small-town is more about how we treat one another than it is rooftops.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
We, we have a certain purview on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're concerned with, you know, the guidelines that we have to operate in. We're, we're more of a judicial branch, if you will. We, we do hearings, right? And so we're, we're supposed to be tasked to make sure that the city doesn't break the law, and that the rights of the landowners are, are also preserved. So how you treat somebody, that is so nebulous, there's no way you could write code to enforce something like that. I think what, what this, the, you know, Hayden staying Hayden means is that it's a bedroom community, and it stays a bedroom community. We can't solve the world's problems, we're not here to subsidize low-income housing with the high-rise for New York. We're solving Hayden's problems. People want to have, you know, low income, go to Post Falls, it's a couple miles away, there's lots of places you can live for cheap, it's not that big of a commute. Lots of people in the world commute over an hour, and, and that's just normal for them. That's not us, bedroom community. Our problems are people driving through our community to get to and from Spokane and other places, and that's, that's our problem. But, but I don't think that preserving Hayden and keeping Hayden, Hayden has anything to do with forcing people to treat people nice. I like being treated nice, that's why I live here, but it's a bedroom community, that's why I chose it, and, and we need to keep it that way. So that means, to me, I think that the public spoke overwhelmingly in the survey about having the majority of the properties that are, that are here today stay that same way. Houses, not high-rises. Yep.
Keith, I, forgive me if I sound progressive, I have kind of a different take on that.
That's fine.
I don't think Hayden is a bedroom community at all. I think Hayden Lake, you could argue is a bedroom community. I think you could argue maybe that Dalton Gardens is, but the fact is Hayden has a small, but there, central business district, we've got a light industrial area in the northwest corner, now that is a belief that I think that we're a metropolitan city, of course not, but not a bedroom community. I think this is a small town.
We're just a couple miles by a couple miles.
It's a small town as the crow flies, sure, but the reason that small town, I believe, came out of the vision was because it's such a undefinable, as I think Planning and Zoning has already said, they asked you what small-town meant, you ask him what small-town meant, and so why even talk about it? It's, it's, why have something in the vision that is so open to interpretation? The whole idea behind.
Well, because these guys are here.
Right, right.
And they're elected by.
I understand.
The constituency.
The whole idea behind shrinking down the vision statement was just to keep it clear, and basically just to the point, not, not get paid by the word, if you will. And that's just a perspective.
Yeah, because you asked all six of us on the Planning and Zoning Commission what small-town feel meant, you're probably going to get six different answers, so.
Agreed.
It's not something, as you said.
And, and if you had said that, I wouldn't have said nothing.
Yep.
But if we're going to say, small-town means how you treat people, no.
Well, I guess.
That's one opinion.
My thing.
And as long as we know that that can be interpreted a number of different ways, great.
Okay.
I think you made a perfect argument there to help us understand that it's not quantifiable.
I, I'd like to make a comment, and I don't know if this is the right place for it, but maybe it is. And my comment is, I'd like to see the citizen survey, that it would be included in our comp plan wherever, and if that's in the vision statement, because it's the people that, that's what they're saying, this is what we would like as a community, they're paying the taxes. So it should be powerful enough to put in that vision statement, I'm not sure how you do it, other than that, that the, the goal would be to listen to the people and amend our comp plan to include the citizen's survey.
Why don't we move through, so we've all got good exposure to this, we don't have to solve all the world's problems tonight. In fact, we could have a second workshop, or perhaps city council could have a workshop where we then consolidate our thoughts on this version, send it back down, and keep the process going, that way we're not hung up on a few words, on a one paragraph, when we've got a whole bunch of stuff to go through tonight.
Yeah.
Does that sound square? Objections?
Yeah, let's move on to the, what we did with the goals and policies.
Should be amended to.
So that's basically what we did in a nutshell, is broke down what, what policies relate to what sections of the comp plan, neighborhoods, intergovernmental coordination, infrastructure, the CBD, central business district, transportation, which came up quite a bit in the citizen surveys, environmental stewards, private property rights, you know, neighborhoods for policies, so I think, going back to your statement about what came out of the citizen survey, you've got neighborhoods with four policies, and transportation with three, and I think that would, their big concern was keeping Hayden Hayden. And I think that would, their big concern was keeping Hayden Hayden and getting around on the roads.
Yes, no? Keep going. Okay.
And this is basically the condensed version of what we came up with for the goals and policies.
I'm just a little confused. You've got number one crossed out. Is that, that you put it in there, but now you want it out? Or is that what was existing and you're, you're eliminating?
I apologize. I thought, I explained earlier. So it was originally in your handouts and what Donna put in there, and so that we didn't change what you were given tonight. And because upon further work by Planning and Zoning, they decided not to make that a goal, but to instead incorporate it into chapter one of the comprehensive plan, we left it in, so you could see it was there, but lined it out. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, so I'm finding myself kind of lost here because I'm not seeing these revisions in the context of how it was. And so I'm feeling disjointed here. And so without having it in the context of what we had.
Can I ask a question? I'm not putting anybody on the spot.
If you go back here to existing goal one, here's the existing goal proposed, working title goal two, intergovernmental coordination. So one is eliminated, and it just goes down through the packet.
Can I ask, how many city council members watched the two Planning and Zoning meetings where all this was going over? One? Okay, fair enough. It's no spill, it's no harm. Perhaps if you guys, after tonight, go back and watch those two Planning and Zoning, I want to say it was like October 22nd and the one after that. There is narration given, there is every single old policy and new policy is put side by side. All the rationale as to why one puzzle piece went here and one puzzle piece is all spelled out. And again, I apologize, maybe we should have asked that specifically, so we could have come here a little more armed. Because you're right, it's, it's a lot.
I did include the minutes of all of those.
In the minutes? Okay.
So, how much of what we're talking about tonight is retalkable? Because like, vision statement, I have concerns about the vision statement up here, but I know we're moving on. So, yeah, I just feel kind of-
Like an elephant sandwich has been put in front of you?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it, yeah. And I'm always a telephone, so yeah.
What were the dates of that again, Mr. Mayor? 22nd?
22nd October, is that right? Are you there about?
I'm looking, the first one was-
I apologize, October 16th? And October 23rd. There's only two presentations. Where we talked about it, okay. Yep, and each of the two presentations is 20 minutes, and it's, you're going to have to fast forward into the meeting unless you want to watch the whole Planning and Zoning meeting, but the presentation starts like 40 minutes in on one day, and I think 20 minutes in on the other day. And here's the deal, if this is honestly, if everybody here of Unilaterality feels a bit unprepared, we can pull chocks and chains and get a, a different day where, yes, sir?
Well, whatever the decision is, and it's obvious, there's a lot of, I don't know how to describe it, but I'd like to make my presentation, so that becomes a part of it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Everything, so that when we do pull the, whatever you just talked about, anchors and chains, that I would have-
Chocks and chains.
That I won't have to come back and then do that, and have to, let's, let's get everything out.
We could.
So that people can then consider everything, and then next time we come together, we can, because this has been going on for since May or whatever the heck it was.
Right, but if we don't have a quorum here that can feel comfortable making decisions.
I just feel like we're doing a lot of spinning.
Sorry.
She has words every time.
Would you like to give your presentation?
You're ready for it?
Ability to provide direction. Thank you.
I think that Ed, just for what it's worth, is on to something. So city councils had their workshop. Then Planning and Zoning has done their work and brought it here. But city council hasn't had an opportunity to share verbally with Planning and Zoning kind of what their thoughts were. So I think it's useful to hear from city council at this point, and then go back to Planning and Zoning and incorporate their comments into the work you've done so far, and then workshop it after that.
To the extent they agree.
They may not, but if they do agree, at least have a dialogue about it and determine whether or not they want to make any other adjustments.
Is this something we've seen before?
This is what's in your packets.
The one that came last-
I changed the yellow to white, just so you could see the road name.
So, Ed, before we start- We didn't, I don't think Planning and Zoning jumped into the flume. Is like, to me, it's the next step, and I'm not saying that this is a waste, I'm just saying that I believe it was Planning and Zoning's intention, once we agreed on new policies and goals, to then start tackling the next layer, including but not limited to the future land. I would, I would request that I can make this, this, three-page here, then decide how it wants to be.
I don't see it in my notes.
Is that this right here?
Yep.
I saw you just have one page. It's not a whole- Okay. Oh, this is the rogue map that was going around Facebook.
Yep.
They're draft for discussion.
Yep.
Oh, down here.
One on Facebook that said it was official?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so in the PowerPoint, probably toggle back and forth.
I want to be able to go between that one and mine.
This one right here. I just made the other one. Do I want to sit down?
Let's try this.
So for those of you that have maps in front of you, your future land use map also- So you could have those in reference to the, that you've got in your packet.
You ready?
I've, I've said probably since the beginning of day one, long before I was even elected, that I've always said, the overall, I feel the overall comprehensive plan was well-done. The entire package as a whole was well-done. And I believe that maybe a few goals and policies need adjustment and revisiting, as we're doing. I hate, I may have missed them, but I don't see any goals and policies defining the volume of the various types of zones. Single-family, mixed residential, mixed-use. How much of X do we need within the city? And I know that's come up for discussion in, in various forums. The volume of higher density and location of higher density has always been my primary concern. And when I talk about higher density, I'm primarily relating to mixed-use, which most people, when you talk about that, envision apartments, that type of thing. I believe the primary adjustments need to be with the future land use map, and how much volume and where the high-density is on the future land use map. I don't, again, I'll say, I don't think we need, I, I get the process that we need to follow with the goals, policies, I understand that. And yes, it is frustrating to me, because I don't think we need that many adjustments to those. I think the main concern of the people is the amount of the high-density on the current future land use map. So to start off a little bit, let's differentiate between high-density and sprawl. Because there's a lot of, I believe, confusion when I talked in here, people talk about it. If you talk to people who are in the industry, for the most part, high-density is usually seen as 12, 15, 20-ish dwelling units per acre. Okay, that's where you're talking about density. Dwelling units per acre. Sprawl is basically area covered, okay? It's how much space is whatever this development taking up. Okay, for example, if you have 1,500 dwellings on 600 acres, they're going, 1,500, that's good, okay? But on 600 acres, that's sprawl. It's 2.5 dwellings per acre. If you have 150 dwellings on 10 acres, that's high-density. In my book, that's 15 dwelling units per acre. So we need to understand and differentiate between sprawl and high-density. For the record, contrary to what was spread during the recent election and campaign, the city has not approved any high-density development in the last two years. Nor have they issued any high-density building permits in the last two years. Those are verifiable facts, okay? Neither the Planning Commission nor the city council has approved high-density development, quote, "one after another" in the last two years. Now let's move on. Where is the residential suburban on the current future land use map? It appears that residential suburban has, to some degree, been sacrificed for mixed-use on- Hold, slow down.
Or mixed residential?
That's, okay, that's just, right, that's the same one.
Yeah, because the other one's this one.
So I need to go down there. Okay.
Alt-tab.
Control-L?
Or, or alt-tab.
Can everybody see that well enough? Okay, that's the current future land use map. And from what I looked at when compared to the previous one, it looks like a lot of the residential suburban has been replaced. Let's just, let's just say that. The citizen survey indicated a couple things. Current residents prefer lower-density, single-family neighborhoods. The survey did indicate that the citizens recognize a need for some mixed-use, higher-density-ish type apartments, whatever you want to call it. They didn't say eliminate it all. Most people recognize and, and realize that the city, we have to have some, okay? They also said that they recognize we need a variety of types. Single-family, twin, tri, fourplex, whatever, residential suburban, mixed residential, mixed-use. If you look at the survey, people did recognize that we need a variety, okay? It's no secret, I think the future land use map is far too much density in the form of mixed-use. All right, the optics are part of the problem that I, I believe we're seeing here. When you see it, the current one, people are saying, whoa, look at all this purple! Holy smoke! I get it, from an optical thing, and a lot of it has to do with things like this right here. That purple looks like it goes back, I don't know, three blocks, two blocks or whatever, well in there. All along there, and all along here, if you, if you look at that, you just, from an overhead, flying into Hayden, shall we say, when that's all built out, it's going to look like, what reminds me of projects in city plan, which is one after another, massive areas of, of high-density, yeah.
Do you think that some of the problem with optics is that people don't understand the difference between the future land use map and the zone map? And what I mean by that specifically is the future land use map is a tool city planners use to allocate resources for potential average densities. It is not a guarantee of how the city will be built out. You could have a purple area with single-family homes in there. If there's a single-family home in there now, that's how it is. In other words, it's a document that isn't used to drive the kind of housing that goes in the zone. It's to plan adequate resources like sewer and water, et cetera, so the city doesn't find itself unable to keep the pipes flowing, as an example.
Well, I, I think I noticed-
Because I don't think the average layman understands that I'm asking you. Do you agree that that's a lot of the, what'd you say, optics, or, you said it was-
Yeah. I think, and, and we're, we're saying, when an applicant comes before either one of our Planning and Zoning or us, you see, you know, here's this and here's that, the goals and policies, and it's in the future land use map. So let's say, for example, somebody comes and wants to put mixed-use back in here somewhere. Down, hover, I don't know how far back that is, it's well beyond, you've got that, that cul-de-sac, or whatever you want to call it, there. You've got a street there, okay? And they say, well, right down on the future land use map, it says high-density. Okay, you've got areas in here, okay? Which is, I don't know how far back that goes. So anybody could come in there and say, well, it's on the future land use map, so we should be able to put our, our 15 units per acre in this whole area here. Let, let me kind of get along to the reason I think a lot of this. Uh, if I'm in place.
Ed, it's 12, though. It's only 12 in mixed.
Well, they could get it to 15 if they add the goodies. 13 if they add some, 14 if they add some, 15 if they add some.
So, so Ed, I understand that you're trying to get to a point, but I'm a, but I'm concerned at at the intensity in which you're presenting this makes people think that that's what's going on. And I've been impressed at how many, and I wish I could remember which, which projects that have come before us, that several of them are within that mixed-use, that where it could have more than a single-family home on it, that they're coming far below the, the allowed density.
We haven't had any applications that I'm aware of for mixed-use in two years, as I said.
My point is the same, is that, is that even though the future land use map may show that it could go there, the developers are not necessarily choosing to put that kind of density there. But when we keep beating the drum of this is, got this on the flume as high-density, it is so misleading as to what's actually happening.
There was that one on Ramsey and, and Hayden that was going to be mixed-use that got denied by city council.
And we can't talk about specific projects in workshop, just, you know.
In addition to that, really, real quick, in addition to that, the future land use map is one of many considerations that Planning and Zoning has to do when they make a decision. It's not an automatic check, just because a developer comes in and says, hey, it's right there, it's on the flume, you can do it. It doesn't work like that. There's four or three, I mean, it depends on what we're talking about.
I've got a page, can I, can I ask you to hold your questions?
Sure, sure.
Because I may, I may kind of, okay? The optics, and again, what I'm talking about here is, and we've heard, this is a broad brush. It's been described as being painted with a broad brush. And again, we deal, you do, okay, but as elected representatives, we deal with the people who are saying, we see this and, and we, we're afraid, we're afraid that it says that and, and it may end up all of that. And so what I, what I would ask is, there needs to be a fine brush, okay? And let's get to talk about transportation, traffic, okay? I believe, and let's go to, oh, help me find it here. How do I get back to? Escape. And to get to-
Just leaving the escape button.
Okay, this is what I propose. I don't know how many miles this alone is, from, what is this, Ramsey probably? Okay, all the way out here to Almost Cutter. Okay, even, even this, I would say, in our code text, very similar to this Carrington Apartments, I believe, or whatever they're called out there, say that wherever we see this, it is on main arterials, larger streets, where people, the ingress and egress is going to immediately come out onto larger roads. When you have it in the areas where they're going to come into residential areas and stuff like that, come off of the main streets, go into these primarily smaller residential roads, okay, they can't handle a whole lot of traffic. That's where I have a concern. But if you put it on Lancaster, which is going to be, already is, a primary east-west from over here and over, Hayden is becoming major, and Prairie is, is what it is. Prairie's already pretty well developed. Out, and along Highway 95, okay? That's where I would propose putting this. Now, like I said, I don't know how many miles this is, but if you said, up or back, does that go to 500 feet from the street or whatever?
A step back for-
How much space does, does this? No.
That's 600 feet.
Okay, so if we said, in code text, that the mixed-use, you come up with a number, or read- Okay, so if we said, in COTEX, that the mixed use should come up with a number, reasonable number, that says that this line, whatever, there's a setback out to the street, would be five hundred, six hundred feet or whatever. So it eliminates that, that optic of it being all the way back into here. And applicants, when they come in, know that if I put it there, I've got this far to go. That they come in and they say, "Well, it, it shows it right here, twelve hundred feet back, that I can put it in there." It's pretty hard to then sit there and say, "Well, nope." You know, you, you can't, because when they, when they say, "Well, look at your map. It's purple all the way down to, on the other one, all the way down to here," type of thing. So I just, I just believe that if we scale back, make sure I got everything here, let's talk about it. Mixed use should be on primary ingress and egress, should be on larger roads and arterials, not in lower-density neighborhoods, not for high-density, has to travel through lower-density neighborhoods. Place the mixed use on Prairie, Hayden, Lancaster, adjacent to ninety-five. I don't think we can, I, I, on the current map, I think we see a fair amount, some purple on Government Way. We already have enough of a problem here on Government Way. If we add high-density on Government Way, I think we're just looking for more trouble. And again, I look at, like I said, Lancaster especially. You can, that's a perfect place to build your neighborhood nodes. It's vacant land right now. As you develop your mixed use up there, you can put in your, your nodes or whatever on the corner. And I'm assuming that's a couple of miles along there, that if that, along Lancaster ended up being all mixed use, I wouldn't know how to guesstimate the number of dwelling units that it would facilitate. So anyways, that's really what I, I wanted to get across is, I think a lot of the problems, concerns that I'm hearing and others are hearing from the people, and that for the last two or three years now, people have been talking about, uh, managing growth, and then when they look at the current future land use map, and then they look at and continually hear the number, right or no, right or wrong or whatever, that the plan is to facilitate thirty-six thousand people in the city in twenty years. That's where you get the upheaval and the uproar within a lot of the community, okay? They see those, they hear those numbers, they see the, the, all the purple on the current map, and I just think we need to, as part of this consideration of revisiting, revising, whatever the comp plan, which the future land use map is a component of, and I think is probably the most notable component, when everybody, when, when just average Joe citizen looks, that's where they look. They don't go through the goal, I, the goals and policies and go, "Oh, yeah, oh, yeah." Now, I understand the applicants and develop, I, I, they do. But the majority of people that we, who are elected to represent, they hear that, they see those numbers, thirty-six thousand, whether that's correct or not, and they see all of the mixed use on the current map. So I think we need to fine-line these things. Not eliminate it all, but fine-line and create COTEX that says, okay, on where it is, five hundred feet from the, from the road, that type of thing, so that they don't end up saying, "Well, we can build back, it shows here." Well, let's go past whatever that street is there, two or three streets deep, and that theoretically, if we want to put it there, it's there, if that makes any sense. Now, I, questions or whatever?
How would you suggest we deal with any future Hutter bypass, then? Do we leave that as a do-not zone?
We've had this discussion with several people, and we, the city needs to, and I know this is a lot easier said than done, type of thing. And I'm gonna, I'll use some language here because it's just me and it's what it is. We need to visit with ITD, who I guess it's currently in their hands, if I'm not correct. They need to poop or get off the pot, okay? Because they are holding, we're going, huh? And how long has the Hutter bypass been in existence or thought of or whatever? And then you, they had, uh, ITD, oh, no, no, Glenn Miles had, uh, spoke with a, I believe it was the Post Falls Chamber of Commerce, Glenn Miles is KMPO, Chairman, Director, whatever. And I read about it. He didn't, he didn't even talk about the Hutter bypass. And I went to an ITD open house months ago now, and I asked three or so people of it, and they, it sounded like so far on the back burner, they're looking at, what it sounded like to me was coming in at the, at the Washington border and going up, what is that, fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
And then up and over on top of Rathrum, they're looking at considering that now. But we're basically, in my opinion, being held hostage by the Hutter bypass.
Amen.
It could be twenty years still before they finally, "Oh, yeah." So we're supposed to sit on our hands and do nothing? Okay? And, and I know that if we say, "Hey, guys, can you give it, can you, can you poop or get off the pot?" They will probably say, "Well, ah, do," you know? It's such a stalemate.
Well, I, I first, when I first moved, I moved to Sandpoint, and they'd talked about the bypass there for sixty years before they built it, so I, I understand the ITD's lack of action. I've seen it in action, but the pro, my concern would be is if we don't actually look at it in our future land use map, what happens then is we have single-family neighborhoods that are getting backed up to a, a freeway.
And that's what you've got down here.
Yeah.
You know, and they're talking about, hey, Brickard and Big Sky or whatever, and, and doing that. But, so are we supposed to sit on it or, and just wait?
So, Ed, obviously, thanks for putting this together and a lot of good points I see in our future. Once we get through goals, policies, and vision, I was having a workshop where we literally, I have done, because I've been through it, Donna will bring a big map, and we will custom discuss and talk about the map. So the idea is good, I believe it's going to happen, and I'll shut up.
Well, yeah, because that's, that's how many layers beyond what we, where we're at.
Today. Well, I, I, I agree with that, and I know the, I understand the process, but I, I will say what I said earlier. I, I, I don't think that the average citizens that we deal with much, look at the pol, goals, goals and policies and whatever it is, they, they look at this more than anything and, and envision it within their own selves, right or wrong, and, and, and think, "Holy smoke, these guys, these guys aren't doing anything about it." Is, is what I, "You're not doing anything." They don't, they don't see, and, and Mary, you're right. And I've talked to developers and, and engineers and things like that, and the changes that we've made in the last two years, the reductions in, in, in density.
Density.
And the, the mixed, the residential multifamily to mixed residential and the cap at eight per acre and things like that, the context of neighborhoods, okay, have, have gone very far in managing. And if you look at the, like I said, look at the building permit reports for the last two years, they tell you what's going on. So both bodies have done a whole heck of a lot. My main concern here is that with, with this future land use map, that the people will say, "Well, no, wait a minute, I look." Definitive, definitive lines, and not just broad, unfortunately, broad brush.
Yeah.
And I've got, I, I mean, I think our, the goals and policies is something that, for planning and zoning and the council, is to make our lives easier so that we can approve or disapprove based on what we see written in our goals and policies. And that's kind of like the menu.
Right.
And then the future land use map is like going to Denny's and looking at the bacon and eggs picture and saying-
Or you can put it.
Yeah. So we could probably just, if we're looking at, from the elected side of things, you guys just want to keep the voting public happy with what you're doing and reacting or listening to their concerns, so they're only caring about this future land use map. So are you saying, "Let's not even worry about the goals and policies and go right to the future land use map"?
Well, a, as I said personally, I, I look at the goals and policies, and I don't have a problem with them for the most part, and the changes, they, they, they demonstrate a vision, which is positive and, and good and well, but I think when I started up, I don't see any goal or policy that talks about, that defines, uh, volume of the types. How, and we've had this discussion, I don't know if it's been in council or at other workshops, where someone said, and I think Vaughn has been asked the question, we, because it, uh, we're required to have a variety-
variety of housing.
Yeah.
Variety of housing. And then the follow-up to that is, "Well, how much?" And, and there is no, "Well, you have to have eight percent of this and fifteen percent." There is no such thing when it comes to, to, to that aspect of how. So a goal or policy, maybe, we would want to try, and I don't even know if we could calculate, "Well, we want X percent of this, X percent of that," and, and then, how do you even? I don't, I, I personally don't think you could do that, that'd be almost impossible.
I think if our issue with our elected officials is with the public, I think it's our incumbent for us to be responsible and speak factually. We can let them know that the future land use map is going to be revisited soon. We can let them know that the future land use map does not represent a place for dense housing, but as I've previously explained, is a document that we use for planning resources for a city. Again, if we lay out the facts and let them know we're working on making every little thing better, I think that's the best we can do. I, I, I can't speak to Joe Sixpack reading this and freaking out. That's beyond all of our ability to influence, uh, Councilmember White.
Well, actually, Gibson was first.
Yep, Keith had his-
I'm sorry, I have my back to Keith.
Yeah, Keith.
That's okay. I'm just gonna say, I, I love that everything that Ed said is quantifiable. It makes planning and zoning, um, able, able to have a line in the sand that's clearly delineated and be able to say yes or no and protect the city from lawsuits. It also gives us the ability to protect the landowners, the citizens of the community, and give them a clear picture of what you can and can't do. And so, so I love that. I, I think that planning and zoning would be smug to just, um, sit back and not care the tricky position that an elected councilman or councilwoman has, because their, their position is voted in or out. They have to have the results, we don't. We, we can sit back and we can be on planning and zoning, we don't get paid, we don't, you know, it's voluntary, we're citizens, you know what I mean? But, but it's something that, that we don't answer to the public the same way that you guys do. So I think we do need to, uh, do something to help you not to incur the wrath. And when it's quantifiable, great, that's fantastic, I love that.
Okay.
Hi. My, one of my big concerns is, uh, changing future zoning on already-developed homes and properties. And I think taking, uh, I believe that taking, uh, a giant, uh, eraser or a magic marker to our map to create a future land use map has implications of changing a person's future on their properties. And so we need to be very careful on making these changes. So when the, the, the purple and the future land use map brought the mixed use and the mixed residential, it's plopped on top of developed properties, and that's where, um, issues come.
I agree.
And that's where home values are changed, and that's where the future is carved out. And even with this map here, I don't agree with these changes because it's still changing zones on top of already-established properties.
And I, and I think that's great discussion.
It doesn't change the zone.
That's true, it doesn't change-
It does not change the zone.
But it changes the future where a person could, it's a future land use map and it still changes the, um...
Sandy, you have to remember, there's also still, I mean, at council's request, we did change, um, our, the context of our approvals to be context of neighborhood as well. That is also something that we consider, um, in our decisions as well. There was reason behind changing the, the zoning and that layer on existing neighborhoods, and, and it's just like where we've got developers that are coming in far below the allowed density in the area. Because they're, they're responding to the market and what is needed, and the community as well. I don't, I don't see that, that, I don't see that your neighborhood is, is at risk of someone buying everything up, bulldozing it and putting in apartments. I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's a danger.
Mary?
So-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think what you just said, and, and I, and I think context of the neighborhood has had, I don't know what kind of feedback anybody else is getting.
It has had an impact.
Yes.
Absolutely, it has.
And what the, what the applicants are bringing in, they are trying very hard, and from what I've seen of, of late, in most cases, they are taking that context of the neighborhood and looking around, whatever it is they want to do, and they are trying to meet that context of neighborhood requirement, which is, uh, as you said, coming in, usually coming in far below whatever, uh, what they could ask for. When in fact, they're going, "Well, we want to do this, but you look over here and look over there, these are single-family and type of things, we have to stay relatively within, we can't just go over here and throw up a big apartment complex, it'll get shot down," even though it is in the purple.
Yeah.
I think, I think more direct to, uh, Councilmember White's, uh, comment is that it's a great detail for the day we pull out the map and the markers.
But, yeah.
So I think we agree that we want to protect existing neighborhoods.
And I do think, because remember when we did this future land use map, that we were doing all these meetings and it was during COVID, everything was via Zoom, so there was probably some fine details that got missed because we were all sitting in a room somewhere, not together, not having these types of discussions, which are a little harder to have, so, um, but I think there is some, you know, there's, it's kind of a broad brush, and there, we can get in there and look at some of the finer things and, and-
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The councilman had his hand up before I did. Oh, great.
Appreciate that. Um, I, I realize we're kind of getting into minutia policy right now, and I know that's not what a meeting was intended to be, but I feel I'm compelled to say this. First of all, Councilman De Priest, thank you for your explanation in putting a quantifiable metric to it, and I, just like Commissioner Gibson said, I think that's a good idea. I too, though, have a concern where, say, something was originally zoned R1 and is now mixed use, and how, what implications there are for that in the future. And I heard you about context of neighborhoods, that's great. Let me tell you my own personal experience on this. Where I used to live, single-family homes in a city, and they changed the zoning and kind of let it sleep for about a ten years, and then all of a sudden, they started ripping out single-family homes and putting in skinny houses and, say, six-plex high-rises, and they're now at the point where they are zoning out single-family homes. And that is an official city policy, and I would hate to see that happen in a place like this.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
And I, 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 I understand and appreciate what you're saying, because I've seen that too in bigger cities. And I would hope, and that's all we can really do, because someday, none of us will be here, okay? And a certain amount of time, certain of us won't even be on these commissions or councils, but I would, I would hope that as time passed, future councils and commissions would continue along the line of thought where we appear to kind of be right now and would not do what you're saying. Because the council, bottom line comes down to it, and let's say it's zoned for whatever, in the context of the neighbors, whatever, and somebody comes in and wants to do what you just described, that hopefully the council at that time would go, "No, man, that doesn't fit." So they, who, those instances that you just talked about have to be approved by whoever's in the position at that time, and if the people have put people in those positions who are inclined to approve that, then that's what it's gonna be, but I don't, I don't, I, I don't see it going that direction. I hope, I hope not.
And I admit it's an extreme example, but I need to put it out there as- So where can we go from here?
We, we let Edson make his comment first.
All right, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just, um, wanted to get a little more clarification-
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to get a little more clarification. There seems to be some confusion regarding zone changes and whether it's, it's taking place or it's not. Would you be able to just explain so that we're on the same page with, for the future land use map, what kind of zoning changes are taking place, if any? And if so, how do they apply?
Do you want to talk to that since you're more on the boots on the ground for that?
We haven't seen it really recently. We had one come in that was zoned residential suburban. And they, I think they tried to go mixed residential. And it was denied. And they came back and just resubmitted.
That's right. We can't speak specifics.
Oopsie.
Maybe we just paint broader brushstrokes and say zone change requests are allowed by law. Planning zoning evaluates them when they are presented. And there's not an overwhelming number that are being presented.
Yep.
Is that fair?
Yep.
So a future, a future.
Any comments? Yeah, please.
So a future land use map, amendment to a future land use map doesn't necessitate any zone map.
Correct.
Changes at all. The only reason we had zone map amendments as a result of the changes to the future land use map is that we also changed our zone code that eliminated a zone. So those folks that no longer had that zone had to move somewhere.
Yeah.
So they either moved, they moved to the zone that most closely resembled the use that was allowed, that was already on the land. But a future land use map change does not necessitate a zone map amendment. A zone map amendment may require a future land use map change.
So that's, that makes perfect sense. Thank you.
And didn't, those people had to move zones.
We originally kind of did a blanket change. And then there was quite an uproar. So we went back to every one that wanted to change to that zone had to come, come before the planning and zoning or before council.
We got consent to brought those forward.
Correct.
Fire. Thank you. I want to go back to what Commissioner Gibson said. He said something real important that direct to us elected folks is that we take the heat and we can take the result of that heat, either directly or in every four years. And so what's critical to me, and this is my, one of the main reasons I wanted, the main statement I want to make tonight, and I'm going to keep beating this drum, is that we won't take the heat as much if we follow the survey, we the people. If we, if our P and Z and our city council follow what we the people want, and I know there's laws that offset that, we're not going to take as much heat. So again, we need to incorporate as an amendment that survey because it says specifically what people want. We won't take as much heat if we follow what the people want. That's the main thing that I wanted to say tonight because I didn't want to get into the specifics. I, I know there's so much detail here. That's a general statement. That's from Matt Roder. I don't know if the rest of the council feels that way, but that's how I feel.
We'll comment and I'll sit down.
Sure.
Okay, it's, it's been brought up several times here. And I believe, just my opinion, that the change we've made already, and as I've told people, these, what I consider final little refinements, okay, will give the applicants and the property owners and the like a real fine understanding of exactly what things are. I don't know, I've had feedback and it sounds like some of the comments that have come here is the applicants out there have recognized the changes and they're adjusting to them. They're recognizing, well, here's the rules, basically. Let's fit it within the rules. So I think we have been, I don't know if successful is the right word, but the, the management strategy that has, has been developed over the last couple of years with these changes, you don't, I don't, I don't see people up in arms about their, people who might be unhappy and want to do more, but they're, they're adjusting to it. They're modifying to it and finding projects that they can still be profitable on and, and yet still meet what we have, the modifications that we made.
So that we can have a way forward. Obviously, what I'm gathering tonight, a city council needs more time to absorb the materials from planning and zoning. Is that fair? So then the next step is what? Would you, should we reconvene a joint workshop in two weeks? Or what, what do you guys need to be ready? If I, if I can ask, I know we have two separate documents, but if P and Z could say, this is the existing comp plan, goals and policies. And then right next to it, show what you want. That would really be helpful. Honestly, though, it's a bit of a plate of spaghetti because as the guy that drafted those, some of the, some of the new policies are a combination of elements of existing policies. Some aren't, some are direct, some are new. It's, it's kind of something, again, I think if you watch the two videos, I think it will really grab you guys up the speed a lot better. Because you're not going to be able to put it on a piece of paper because I tried. Donna and I went a couple of rounds with what product can I use to communicate this? And it's honestly, it's just a little more complicated than a single piece of paper can put on.
So in the, in the back of the packet that you guys have, part of the PowerPoint.
The one you gave us today or the one?
The one I emailed to you. Is his presentation. And literally to go through it, he says, he said easy re-map existing policies to new goal. So literally they were, they were rewritten, rearranged, combined. And so the closest marriage of that movement that we could get to was in the front of it where it identifies the existing.
Where are you?
The front of your packet that I emailed to you.
Okay.
Where it identifies existing goals. And then it says proposed, working title, go to. And then it talks about whether it changed or not. And that's, this is the closest marriage that we could get from what we had to what he's proposing. And then if you go down to, you know, here, he's got new goals that are kind of identified. Part of those may or may not be his, they might have been council's. But then there are combinations of these goals into this rework over here. So you start saying, it just isn't.
But this is their work product, right?
Yes. Word for word.
So what about our work product? We, we submitted a bunch of ideas. So they have that.
Correct. So this summary is literally a summary of all of, it took all of the, Councilmember White proposes this and Councilmember De Priest proposes this and.
On page two and three, isn't that what that is?
Well, no, it's all mixed in here as well. So we literally took all of your comments and all of your comments and merged them. So it took all of the individuality out of the comments and made it, these are the proposed changes. And then this is kind of a summary of just the planning and zoning changes as proposed. You can, you go through here and pull those out of here, but that is what that is.
So if I got it right, this is a blend of.
It is.
It's a blend and that's specific, the other one.
Trying to put them paired together so you can see if they're, you know, how many of these are similar and how many.
So, for example, page five, the attachment you sent. Top of the table.
Sorry, Tom, can you speak a little louder?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I, I am referring to page five from the, oh, that's right. I forgot to press the button. Page five of the attachment. It's a table, top of the table, left-hand column, existing goal from the existing comp plan. Right? Okay. Next column, existing text of that existing goal.
Correct.
The right-handmost column says, and I'm looking at the first row, number two, working title, goal number one, comprehensive plan. That's in red. Does that mean that existing goal number two has now been changed to working title for goal number one?
Correct.
And then below that in black is an explanation of why.
Correct.
That, so that's how we need to read through all of these.
Sorry. It was really hard to turn it. So many changes.
I think if, just my recommendation, if it's, if you take a combination approach of reading the documents, watching the videos, it's gonna all, then you'll see, oh, now I see why this is here and why Donna did. I think it'll make a lot more sense. Yes, sir.
I just want to share something that affects P and Z and the council that you probably want to know. Can anybody tell me, how many residential connections are left at Harbs? In Haton area, regional zoom? Anybody know?
No, you are the most educated in Harbs in the room.
Okay, but as planners and as council members, do you think that's important to know?
We typically get that information or we, I know when we went through the comp plan, they were telling us how many are either available or will be available based on capacities and lift stations, all those types of things.
Yeah, there's two elements. There's the delivery system, which we deliver through our pipes to the sewer plant. And then there's the actual capacity of the sewer plant that has a capacity, a maximum capacity. And I, we had a Harbs meeting last Thursday. And the previous month, we had 986 residential hookups in December or November because we didn't have a meeting available. So the new Metro Carb Wash that you've seen on 95 came onboard and it reduced the amount of residential connections at the sewer plant down to 786 residential connections. So my question is, well, not a question, it's a point, is Hain Canyon's going to take up about 1,500 connections, residential connections. There's a proposed, or there's another subdivision that I'm hearing about that will have 500 connections. So that's 2,000 residential connections. And that doesn't account for a number of other subdivisions. So with our planning, do we want to, do we need to know what the capacity of the sewer plant is? Because it can take years to plan out, study and then build and increase the capacity of that plant. So do we go ahead and just approve whatever without knowing what we have available?
So if at the time these come in, these subdivisions or whatever come in, the applications and the, and the letters go out, the agency letters go out, is, is it not the responsibility of Harbs then to say, hey, we're, at whatever point down the road?
It's will serve letters.
Yeah, yeah. If, if they don't have any left, isn't that for them to then say, guys, guess what? You can't move forward because we don't have any left. At which point in time that would have to be dealt with before anything else could happen.
We don't guarantee that there's any hookup available with the will serve letters. We don't guarantee that. When you take out your building permit is that if there's any available, you get it. So this is the big question is, how far can we go out in the future with approving developments without making sure that our sewer plants in sync with taking care of that? And I don't know, I guess maybe that's a question for a study to say at what point, whoa, we need to know exactly.
That might be a good question for Alan at the next city council meeting or not?
No.
No?
Didn't Spirit Lake have a some level?
You will, when you reach capacity, there will be a decision to be made with regards to treatment. First come, first served.
And didn't Spirit Lake and I?
You don't get to ration them. You don't get to ration your connections. Because then you'll be accused of discriminating and we're way off topic for a workshop.
But it has to be part of our, it has to be part of our comp plan. Infrastructure has to be, have to be available if we're going to plan.
Yes, you have to have a sewer chapter in your comprehensive plan. That is correct.
And that's what I'm asking for.
You have one. And you have a sewer master plan. But we are only in control of the collection system. We are not in control of the treatment system.
Right. In fact, the district, the Hain Lake Sewer and Recreation District, which also owns a portion of the plant, they said clearly they will not pay for one penny to increase the capacity of the plant. That's all on us.
They didn't pay for the last expansion either.
Yeah, who, and you know, do the people in Hain want to pay for that expansion?
Well, and isn't that part of that what the future land use map does? Is allow those agencies to see where or what growth is going to be and they plan accordingly for the future?
I think we're, yeah, diverging. Diverging from proposed versus actual and, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
I just bring it up, it needs to be.
So, but the point of that is that knowing what you know based on Harbs, and when we're looking at, do there need to be adjustments to the comprehensive plan? You should be in the sewer chapter.
Get the sewer.
You should be looking at goals and policies in relationship to what you know from Harbs and sewer. And are our goals and policies meeting what you actually know? Is our planning in our comprehensive plan meeting what you actually know?
Well, and I'm just bringing, making the point because we're looking at the comp plan that this is important, critical, critical items we need to be on.
So I posed a question 10 minutes ago. I'm looking for an answer, please. Two weeks enough? Do we need to look at our calendars, synchronized swatches? What do we need to do to continue the work that we've started tonight? And I guess perhaps foolishly I'll ask, does the group believe we've got a productive way ahead with the information we have potentially?
I, I think that because it's been a long time and there's new members on both sides, that this was valuable just for us to be together and be able to talk. But I would hope that when we get together next, we can be in the square where we can see each other and actually work through the individual policies and goals. But that does require a lot of homework on everybody's part so that we can all come prepared to actually get some things done.
So is two weeks enough, three weeks, four weeks? What do you guys need? Again, if we just keep it to the box of vision, goals and policies, we're not reinventing the comprehensive plan. Let's, one step at a time. We're not redoing the flume, one step at a time, so that we can get through this next milestone. How much time does everybody need?
I'll speak for myself. I don't need any more time on the goals and policies.
Okay, fair enough. Planning and zoning?
I mean, I think we did.
Planning and zoning did their work. It's time for council to come back and comment on what the work planning and zoning put forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you prefer to handle it via email from Donna to get your schedules or from the appropriate person? I don't want to put Donna on the spot and misspeak.
Yeah, my experience is if we go away, we'll promise to communicate later and take more time to get things scheduled. I'd rather just stick around right now.
Well, I'll share with you, I, I didn't bring my phone in here because I want to set the example that we shouldn't have our phones in these meetings.
You have a calendar lined, is that right?
That doesn't have all my stuff on it. That doesn't have all my stuff.
And I actually looked at the map a little bit.
Planning and zoning commission have the meeting, the first meeting, the first week of February. And they have a planning and zoning commission meeting the last, fourth, the fourth Monday.
How many days till the fifth? That's two weeks. Is that enough time?
No, you had several council members shaking their heads. That was not enough.
Well, again, if I re-ask the question, just look at the policies, just look at the goals, just look at the vision, don't look at the whole comp plan.
We have a full calendar. Look at the flume.
Don't look at the flume. Is two weeks enough?
I'll speak for myself, two weeks is sufficient.
Okay, I've got a yes, yes.
Yes. As long as Donna doesn't have sort of electronic hurricane.
I understand. All right, let's, let's tentatively plan to workshop at the next P and Z on, is it February 5th?
It's February 5th. I'm just checking myself. So if I can make a suggestion, when you're watching the P and Z, if you do the same thing I do for you guys, watch it at 1.5. It goes much faster.
I am suddenly insulted.
Fast forward.
No. And you all talk really fast like chipmunks.
You get it, you get it. It just moves faster.
Our meetings are generally shorter than theirs.
Well, yeah, they are generally shorter, but again, 1.5 still moves it along.
At 5:30.
Do we not have anything other than that? Oh, well then.
5:30.
Everything's not 5:30 for you to try it.
Chair Taylor, I think we've squizzed all the juice out of this meeting we're going to have.
Is that adjourned?
It's your meeting, sir. You got to make a motion, I think, right?
So did the council, though, decide to have their own workshop in two weeks?
No, no.
Do you have homework and come back and?
That is the fifth of February?
February 5th, 5:30.
I'll make a motion that we enjoy.
I second that.
Thank you, planning and zoning. I appreciate it.